Hello, welcome. A little quick move there on switching. Right, here I am. So I thought we'd get started early just because I saw a couple of folks chatting. First off, HK John, just want to say directly, well done on getting that thing scheduled, December 2nd, setting the date. That's 90% of the battle is setting the date and then studying up to it. A lot of people, actually, it's funny, I created, I started a little YouTube channel where I give kind of like a little daily advice. And one of the things I was saying is there's sometimes where you're like in that decision mode and the best decision you can make is just to make a decision and just to do it. So well done on doing exactly that. Oh my gosh, it's Arizona and I don't know if you can see, let me just, you'll be able to see a little bit more of the office, ah, you can't see it. It is, it just started downpouring rain outside, which in Arizona, I'm like, it's the flood, the end of the world is here, like, we don't get rain. So that's, I want to go out and, so it's a novelty. My kids are all going to run outside and play in the rain. That's how it goes. So a couple of things, so are we at the top of the hour or not? No, I've still got a minute, so I can still dance around for a minute. So, so yes, HK John, sorry, it started raining, mind gone. So great job on scheduling it and the fact is just studying up to a deadline is going to be half the battle and you will be nervous. It's gonna happen. I'm nervous, it doesn't matter what exam I'm taking, it's just part of the whole experience. You just gotta, you just kind of, you know, just gotta get through that. So a couple, a couple, actually, I think I only have one thing to say before I get started. So I'm new to Twitch. I was looking around to figure out what would be the best platform and I'm like, I think I'm going to try something nobody else is trying right now, for good reason, probably. And I'm like, let's just use Twitch as the streaming platform. And I did and we've been doing these streams now for about a month, maybe a little bit longer. And Twitch has been like, they actually reached out to me and they're like, hey, these have been so successful, you are now an affiliate. See, watch, watch, when I send a message, I'm going to say hi in the little chat, that little star there means I'm an affiliate. And I was kind of like, oh, that's great. And then it said, and you have $2.64 in your account. And I was like, what? And so I'm looking, I'm like, I'm trying to figure out. And so I actually had to call somebody, I'm like, I don't know where, how did I get 200, 200, $2.64? And they're like, oh, you're an affiliate now. That means that people can gift you their Amazon Prime subscription. And they explain, so I know a lot of you are totally new to Twitch as well and so am I. So apparently, if you have Amazon Prime, which 90% of the world does, I think, just because of the free shipping, right? So you can actually gift somebody, because Amazon owns Twitch, found that out too. And so you can gift them a subscription, which gives them $2.50 a month. And I was like, that's really cool. So I have no idea who did that, but thank you. Get you in your affiliate-ness, that's right, I'm an affiliate. So I have no idea, I was like, so I got here early, I'm like, I'm going to figure out how to do that. And I looked and I'm like, I have no idea. So if, so it would be really cool if everybody that jumped in, if, I mean, it costs you nothing, I think, to just say, here, I have my Amazon subscription, that would be cool. If not, no worries. It's just, I was like, that was, that was really cool of somebody. So thank you. Whoever, I don't know how to, it just says, you have one subscriber. I have one subscriber. Okay. So let's do this. I don't know how to do that, actually. So I've just started getting... I'm back, sorry. I just realized what happened there. Actually, I know exactly what happened. Hang on, you're, the whole phone thing, it's, so I was trying to reconfigure things so it'd be more convenient and I actually broke stuff. So gimme, it's going to go away for just a second, hang on. There, there, now you can hear me. Okay, there we go. Yeah, I was trying to, yeah, long story, I'm not even going to go there. So, so let's dive into the certification exam, actually, to make this a little bit bigger. And let's get some studying going, especially for you, HK John, and see if we can, we can get you set up. All right, so Kaplan Practice Exam. Again, this is a really cool thing that just comes with every CBT Nuggets subscription, which I found out, I just found out, that you can actually sign up for CBT Nuggets for free for a week, like you can access everything. So if you, if you don't have this exam, like HK John, like if you don't have a CBT Nuggets subscription, just go sign up for a free week and you've got like a ton of practice, you can, you can access everything for a week. I was like, I didn't know that, it's pretty cool. So exam simulation, I'm going to go right here and we'll pick up right where we left off. Cool. All right. So actually, I think, I think this one forgets the last one that we did. Did we do this one? Yeah, 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 we did this one last week. Okay, so I'm just going to hit next. Okay. So here we go, question 43. And if anybody is new, the way we do this, I read the question, give you a few seconds to think about it, type in the answer into the chat. And awesome, Mala, for passing ICN D1 yesterday. Sorry, I got to go back to the video. Great, like that's, it warms my heart every single time that happens because it's, it really is, it's not easy. So great job. So which of the following IP addresses are valid Class B addresses if a default Class B mask is in use? Think about that one. Trying to fix things, obviously, as we're going. Looks like we've got D and E, all right, let me grab my pen. Class A range, 0, well, I guess you could say technically 0 through 127. So any IP address that starts with 0 through 127 is a Class A. Class B is anything 128 through 191. And that's where our Class C starts, from 192 to 223. So just look at that first octet and we go, okay, it's looking for Class B, so no, 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 oh, yep, and yep. And I think that's what most people were chatting in. D and E, let's check our answer. Bada bing, good, good, good. The reason that's useful, by the way, is because when you're doing subnetting, you'll often need to know where do you begin from. That's kind of like when you're learning subnetting, first phase is learning what the default classful addresses are and what their default masks are. Got to fix my little buttons here. Okay, good. Next, next question. Which two are not features of a Cisco NAT implementation? All right, good, good, good. Yeah, I don't know where Jake is, he abandoned me and I hope he hears that wherever he is. All right, so which of the following are not Cisco NAT? So static NAT is our one-to-one, so that is a feature. NAT overload is where you share one IP address, one public IP address or a couple of public IP addresses for a whole bunch of private, so that is. Overrule, definitely not a thing. Dynamic NAT, dynamic NAT is where you have a pool of addresses and you have your router and you're going to a pool of another addresses, vice versa, back and forth between those two pools, so that is a thing. Override, definitely not a thing. So you guys calling out C and E, you are right on. Check. Good, 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 well done. Next up. Which, okay, what will be the output of show CDP neighbors detail command issued on router A? Okay, so right over here, let's see if we can fit all this in, it's going to be tough. Right, so we'll do this one together because I can't scroll, I can't scroll up and down at the same time. So, so we've got router A, so the big thing I think that they're wanting you to see here is that when you do a show CDP neighbors detail, you don't see all the neighbors, you only see what's directly connected. Like this guy would never see this, he'd never see that, he'd never see any of these things because those aren't directly connected, even if it's just a switch, doesn't go beyond. The show CDP neighbors detail gives you as much detail as it's got about it, it won't be that nice little table output of show CDP. So with that being said, let's scroll down a little bit and see what we got. So it's saying, okay, would you have this router 26, let's see, 2611? I'd say no, because that's looking too far. C2924C, let's see, C29, where, I don't even know what that is. So it says 10 dot, 10 dot, what is that, 10 dot 10 dot 1 dot 3? Okay, 10 dot, okay, so yeah, so it looks like switch A is not name switch A, it is, it is this guy, or that is its model number. Okay, so that's, I would say, yeah, valid, you'd see that. Out interface Ethernet 0, that's a 10 megabit per second interface, old. Okay, so we've got router 2511. Okay, so I'm guessing that guy out, out serial 0, so serial 0. And I'm going faster this, but I would say, yeah, probably see that guy. 2611, again, we've gone too far, no, I don't see him. And then 25, okay, uh-oh, uh-oh, what do we got here? So it's showing entry addresses. Huh, oh, serial 0 and Ethernet 0. Serial 0, Ethernet 0. Oh man, this is, so it's saying, would you see both? Okay, this is tricky and sorry, you guys are probably twitching right now, no pun intended, from the screen, just going up and down and up, that's all I can do to see this. What will be the command of show CDP neighbors on router A? So I'm checking those two because I would see those two. Oh, wait, oh, wait a sec, ah, they got me, so they've got this dotted line right here, like that's the same output, no, you wouldn't see that. So, so I'm guessing they want us to go with that guy, just one answer. And I'm going to uncheck that guy because you would see both of them. So I think they were like, would you just see one? Or would you see both? And yeah, so they combined both, that kind of tripped me up there. So I'm thinking that's, that E is the right one. What do you guys think? And I see, I, yep, 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 I think everybody's on the same, the same sheet of music, we got ISP and switch A is what we would see, it's just playing with the semantics of the question. I know Genie008 is saying this one, well, it would not see router 2611, that one is too far. So I'm going to go with answer E, let's check it out. Yeah. So that's what they were going for, they were just wanting you to see that it would output both of those on the same one. That's, I mean, so I stumbled because one of the things I don't like is where you're being tested more on, can you read questions and answer? Or is it actually good material? So I think they could have made that question much cleaner, we spent way too much time on silliness. All right, next one. Okay, click and drag the network components and functions to their corresponding descriptions on the right. We had one of these before in one of the earlier study sessions and it was just terribly worded. So I think this one's a little more logical. So how about this? In, in the chat, how about you just write them, type your answer in the order that they would come in? What would be, you know, do like a one dot, you know, let's just say it's layer two switching, two dot router, three dot, you know, so that way you can answer them, okay? Go for it. Good, 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 all right, let's, let's look at it together, see some of the answers that come in, I'm just chatting to people while we're, while we're in the meanwhile. So first one up here, it says, performed using a destination MAC address within a frame. So what handles destination MAC addresses? That would be layer two switching, a normal switch does that, good. Provides a framework for designing inter-networks in layers. Sounds like OSI model, TCP IP, DoD model, hierarchical model is, well, hang on, let me read the rest of them. Suite of protocols used to transmit data, okay, that helps. TCP IP is a suite of protocols, it's not just one, which tells me that this guy is probably a hierarchical model. When I think of hierarchical models, I usually think about the Cisco three-tiered hierarchy, which actually provides a framework for designing networks, that's, that's exactly right, it's just, when I see, when I hear layers, I think OSI model, I think everybody else does too. Separates broadcast domains and connects different networks, yeah, by far, that's what a router does, is it separates networks apart. Click okay on that guy and we, they're all green, if they're, if they're wrong, it's going to be red on there, so we are correct. Good, 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 I'm looking at the answers on there, you guys are right there, some people flipped the hierarchical model and TCP IP, TCP IP is that suite of protocols. But yeah, you guys are right on, good. Next. Which Cisco, so here's what, here's what I want to do, I'm just thinking, because it's one of the things that I'm seeing, so, so I do have a hard stop at 3:30 my time, which I don't know what time that is for you, so in 15 minutes. What I'm thinking is, we'll go until 3:25 and then I just want to leave it open for Q and A. So, so if you have questions, think of them, don't type them in yet because I'll spaz. We'll do, do this for 10 more minutes, then we'll just do five, five minutes of just whatever questions you want to ask me, we can do that at the end. Okay. Which Cisco command will display the version and configuration data for secure shell? Looks like most of, the consensus is on that show ipsh. I've got a router right here, let's, let's do it. So I've got this set up right here, let's bring our console connection up to the front. Can you guys see that? Oh, I'm a little off the screen, here we go, right about there, there we go, cool. Cisco, so we can actually test it and see what we see. Do show ipsh. And sure enough, there you go, SSH is disabled, I have not enabled it on this router yet, you got to create your RSA keys to enable SSH, but this, this will tell you what SSH version you're using and everything about it. And by the way, if you want to create RSA keys, that's where you do the ipsh, hang on, ip, oh shoot, crypto, what was it, crypto generate, that's right, generate, no, crypto, dang it, crypto key, there we go, generate, it's been too long, crypto key generate RSA, there we go. Hit the enter key and bam, very weak keys, but that would be how you enable SSH. Show ipsh, I'm glad they didn't ask me that question. And bam, we've got SSH version 1.5 enabled because I have a key size that is way too small. But that's, that's SSH in a nutshell. Cool. All right, so show ipsh consensus is, we are correct. Next. And I, and I say this every time, before, before I read this question, those, those review scenarios, so when you answer the questions on these practice exams, I know right now, I'm just like, yeah, 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 and we're going, but if you have the time, if you have access to that test, and I mentioned to a few people, I didn't realize that CBT Nuggets gives a free week of access to everything that they've got if you just, if you just go there and so I was like, wow, you could get these practice exam, read those descriptions, they are very educational. Sometimes I learn more reading practice exam answers than I do actually doing the technology, I'm like, oh, that's how it works, they're so very well written. So you have discovered that router 8 on your network is not receiving updates from router 10. Okay, so we're in the RIP world, it looks like. Router 10 has an IP address of 20156419K, all routers run RIP. Since you're new and not completely familiar, you execute a debug IP RIP on router 8, okay, and receive the results below. So we do this debug, it's saying, okay, I'm sending RIP V2 update out, building tables updates and ignored invalid authentication. Okay, so what can be, can be, what could be, what can be the problem? Think about that one. All right, there we go. Good, 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 this, I was reading those answers, it's could be a little tricky and maybe it's not, we'll see. It says, there's connectivity problem between the routers, I would say, nope, nope. If there was a connectivity problem, it wouldn't be ignoring packets because it would say, I'm not receiving packet, I'm nothing received. So router 10 is configured for RIP V2 and router 8, the other one, is configured for RIP V1. Now, in the answers, I didn't see that many people choosing that one because, little known fact, RIP V1 doesn't support authentication. That was a feature that they added in RIP V2. So, so it would, it would say, hey, invalid authentication, I would assume, because it wouldn't be able to authenticate. So I'm going to, I'm going to, again, I don't know the answer because I haven't looked at it, but I would say that probably would result in that. Router 10 has not been configured for authentication. So it says router 10 has an IP address of this, so it's saying, I'm sending an update and then invalid authentication, so it's not configured. I don't, I don't think it would do this if it wasn't configured, I would say it is configured for authentication and maybe the other side isn't, or it's using RIP V1 or something like that. It's over 16 hops away, no, that, they wouldn't hear each other, RIP only works for directly connected devices. Password is not correct, yeah, I would say that one could be a possibility. The only one that I'm hesitant on is C, but I think, I think I'm going with you, yes, Cuban B. I think B and E, a couple of people, C and B, B and D, this is, this is a tough one, let's find out, let's check the answer. Oh, look at that, okay, I'm curious, I made a whole argument for B and it's like, no, you're wrong, well, let's, let's see. It says, could be router, router 10 has not been configured for authentication, this is ascertained by the line in the debug output saying, I ignored this invalid, this is not a problem with RIP version mismatch, otherwise, oh, there you, there you go, we'd get the illegal version, fair enough. It's not a connectivity problem, we knew that, it's not more than 16, okay, so, so it's saying that we're not, okay, so if the other side, if the other side was RIP V2 sending messages and we weren't configured, then you're, it's right, we would get the invalid authentication, yep, good, now we know. All right, next. Question 49, which Cisco inter-network operating system command, iOS command, is used to make the running configuration in RAM? The configuration the router will use it started off, all right, come on, you got to get this one really quick, this is, this is an easy one, gimme it. Good, 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 you got it, you guys, this should be like bam, you're probably reading the rest of them because you're like, it could be any of them. Yeah, copy, run, start, all of these other ones do, I mean, it copies it somewhere, TFTP, flash, memory, you know, but only this one will do it. Alternate commands would be write or write memory. And that's it. Okay, so next up, man, we may make it through this, this exam today or maybe, maybe the next time, okay, cool. So you have multiple departments sharing a common network. You're concerned about network traffic from one department reaching another department. What would be the solution for isolating the departments? Choose all that apply. Good, good, good. Love it, I love, it's funny because I can, I can feel you guys thinking and I'm looking at your answers. So, so let's, let's actually talk through these piece by piece and I just looked at the time, I got to, this will be our last one, right? And then we'll do a quick Q and A. So yes, that is what VLANs are all about, is where you've got, you know, two departments, let's just say, devices for department A and B and we go, okay, you're in VLAN A, so that's, that's what VLANs do. Okay, separate collision domain, that's, that's, when you have a switch, the ports on a switch are all collision domains, that would not separate anybody. Configure separate subnets, that's where I'm like, ah, like, and I saw a bunch of people were saying, yeah, and I would, if, and by the way, some of these, when you take the real exam, some of these questions are very like, ah, on the real exam, it's a lot more crisp, there's, there's not much like, well, it could be that or it could be that, it's much, much better about doing that, so don't, don't worry about that. I would say yes, but I mean, in order to do that, you've got to set up a router or a layer three switch or something, and that's probably going to be also using the VLAN. So I would say, yes, that's right, but, but I still would be like, ah, I don't, I don't like the way it's worded. Assign a VTP domain net, that's, that VTP just replicates your VLAN. So when you've got multiple switches and you create a VLAN 10 up here, it replicates it so that VLAN 10 shows up on that switch, it does not separate departments at all. And then configure trunk links between departmental switches, that's part of a VLAN configuration, but I don't think I would put that as, that's, oh, whoops, right then. I don't think I would put that as a, as an answer, so I would, I would just, let's, let's do it. A and C, check it, good, 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 all right, cool, we're there. So, so I just looked at my watch and we are at, there's a couple of minutes passed and I've got to book it when, when we hit 3:30. So Q and A, yes, Q and A, Whitaker, so I'm going to do something that I'm not very good at doing and that's being concise. So shoot questions as soon as you can at me of anything that you can, and I will try and be as concise as I can to get through as many as we can in three minutes or less, sound cool? Okay. There's no questions, so, so thank you, thank you, thank you. How am I doing? I'm actually doing, I'm doing well and transparent, honest with you, I'm, I'm actually, I'm, tired because I'm recording the new CCNA and soon to be the new CCNP enterprise, the new encore, CCNP enterprise, and there's just a lot, there's just, and that's why, that's, that's why I'm doing this, is I'm like, you guys got to get your CCNA before 2020 because it's going to be hard, it's going to, it's going to be a lot harder, the two exam path going away, it's going to, it's going to be hard. So are you allowed to share how in-depth the labs are on the test? Um, yeah, I, I mean, I can give you a synopsis that the, the labs on the test, it's not uncommon, and I'm just going to blanket statement. And it's not uncommon for those things to take 10 to 15 minutes. And it will freak you out, um, for good reason. I mean, it's a timed test and you're like, this feels like it's taking too long. Um, so, so know that you, you probably won't finish the test with much time. Um, so if you feel like you're getting there and you haven't had any simulations, know that they will happen and they do take time. And they will pop up at the worst time, at the end or right at the beginning. So, so, um, the, the depth of the labs, they can be pretty, they, the labs, I would say, are the best part of the exam because they really test, do you know what you're doing? It's not so much just type these commands, did you remember it? It's more of like troubleshooting, trying stuff, that kind of thing. Uh, new CCNA, it's a good idea to purchase some switches and routers, like in your current version. Um, I, I am a huge proponent for physical devices, but one of the things that we're adding, oh, spoiler alert. Um, when this thing is released, is we're actually adding the ability to do virtual labs. And that is, we actually have, we've created a system where you can access the, the, the iOS environment remotely. And there will be labs in, in the new exam. So if you don't have the, so I always say buy physical gear because it's the best way to really learn it at the beginning. Um, later on, you can do virtual, but, but, um, but there will be virtual labs in the new CCNA. So that's, that's news for you. Um, labs, yes, uh, labs hitting you at the end. Okay, last, last two questions and then, and then I'll go fast. Uh, should I buy real equipment or use virtual equipment? Um, I, at the, at the beginning level, and I just mentioned it, I'm a huge proponent of real equipment because then you can do it. I studied virtual at first when I learned Cisco a long time ago and I did myself a disservice because when I got to real networks, I was like, I don't really know this. Um, last question, uh, with rapid spanning, oh! With rapid spanning tree, I forgot to, I'm going to, the, the spanning tree lesson I did on the last Twitch stream, I'm going to put that live on YouTube. I'm actually going to do that today. So, so watch my YouTube channel. I'll be putting a full spanning tree, um, explanation that we did in the last livestream. Um, with rapid spanning tree is sending proposals and agreement. Is there any time limit? The switch will wait to receive the agreement. Thanks, thanks easily. Um, uh, no. Uh, so, so they're always being sent. The BPDU's are always sent. If the, the proposal, the agreement ever gets there and it's a better proposal, a better, more preferred bridge ID, the, the change happens right then. It's, it's, it's a constant thing that's, that's happening. So I'm, I'm not 100% sure on, on, is there any time limit? The switch will wait to receive the agreement. I, I'm not 100% sure on, on what you're asking, or maybe I am, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. But BPDU's are always going on. Okay. Thank you. Yes, leave now. Appreciate you guys. Thanks. See you soon.